Good evening, I'm Jonathan Johnson. And I will be your moderator for tonight's forum. The Sheneut Area Chamber of Commerce and Office of Tourism is pleased to present this candidate forum for you. We want to thank the commission candidates for coming out this evening. And we also want to thank the audience that's here and those who are watching on TV. I want to thank Channel 4 and 5 for putting this together via live TV plus later will be on the website. All of our candidates were invited to be here tonight and all of them came as a part of the participating group, which should make for a good education piece for the public as we head into a voting session. Due to the fact that we got 12 people here tonight, we've kind of changed our format from the past. What we'll do is, as you see them seated, they've drawn to get those seats. And then secondly, as we move into the questioning, we'll just have four questions tonight. And what I will do is draw a name to start each question, so it's random. And then we'll work from that individual's to their left and work through that question, and then we'll start to the next question. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer the question given to them. They will be notified at 45 seconds and 15 seconds prior to their time expiring. Questions were made available to the candidates this past Tuesday, so they've had them. These questions were put together by a bipartisan group of individuals from the community and from the chamber. We tried to go through them and ensure that it was an approach that was equitable and one that presented a fair questioning process. This forum is specifically to answer questions, it's not a debate, and we will not take any questions from the floor. We are pleased to welcome the candidates tonight. We have incumbent Kevin Bertho, we have Sam Boudreau, we have Phil Chaney, Tim Erickson, Tim Fairchild, Randy Gilmore, incumbent Martha McCoy, Bernie Nyer, John Odell, David Williams, incumbent Greg Woodyard, and Kathy Wright. Prior to us going into the first question, I would just like to challenge us with a quote from Booker T. Washington as we move into dealing with what might be some touchy issues and ways of dealing with things. Booker's quoted as saying, "There are two ways to exert one's strength. One way is to push down, and the other way is to pull up." And I would challenge us as we enter a time of voting and a time of politics that can get kind of testy, that we always look at the issue and not the individual. And we take the time to make sure we're compassionate to those who are willing to run, because I appreciate all of you for being willing to do that. You're willing to put feet to your words and just not make words, but actually come out and run and try to be a positive part of our community. And before I read the first question, I'm going to take a moment and say a prayer, since I'm not paid by the government and I can do that. Let's pray. Father God, I just thank you for this opportunity to come together on behalf of our town. I just thank you for all 12 of these individuals that are willing to come out and take a risk, Lord, and run, and run for what they believe in and try to represent those who have gotten behind them. Father, I just pray most of all that as we go through this time and these next few months or weeks of the politics, that we'll always remember that the only eternal significance to the things we touch are people. The issues will go away, and those things will change, but the people are what matter. In your name, amen. What I'll do is draw a name out of the sack and we'll start from there on the first question. Tim Erickson, you'll take the first question. And the question is, please introduce yourself and then answer the following question. What was the motivating factor in your decision to run for Sheneut City Commissioner or to run for reelection? In your case, it's to run for Commissioner.
My name is Tim Erickson and I live at 609 West Main here in Sheneut. My decision to run again has been fueled by a vision and a voice that has historically refused to die. At times in my life, I have silenced that voice, at times I have ignored that voice, at times I have tried to listen to that voice, to see that vision. And this is the vision, the reason I'm running for City Commissioner. Government should at its best be an institution of the people, by the people, and for the people. It should serve the interests of the whole community. It should promote common good, it should seek to minimize the harm and burden it imposes on its citizens. It should seek to understand its population and their economic realities. Government, at least on a local level, should be the servant and not the master. But from my perspective, the city of Sheneut as an entity has long ignored the vast majority of her citizens in favor of catering to its own internal plans and desires. It buys up dying country clubs and props up failing local establishment. It looks the other way at delinquent loan commitments made by favored insiders and instead hammers 80-year-old citizens for being late on their utility payments. It looks not to serve, but to be served. From my perspective, the whole pyramid structure of local governance is terribly upside down. Instead of placing citizens at the top, followed by commissioners who are elected to represent them, flowing down to the city manager, and ending up ultimately with city workers, we have a city fortress that seeks to move in its own direction, at its own will, for its own goals and desires. I'm not running for the glory of Tim, and I don't want to speak for the other seven challengers, but I would say, as I have said in the past, that the only way to change this vision of citizen as cash cow is to turn out every incumbent and every lifelong city employee turned candidate in favor of change. I am running to give voice to the voiceless, to promote local vision and local voices. Thank you.
I am David Williams. I live at 711 South Evergreen. I've lived in Sheneut for 25 years, so I'm not a native. Married, my wife is Judy Williams, and she is a native of Sheneut. I have been thinking of running, I did run in the past, and been thinking of running for a few years. And I guess the two F's is what sealed the deal for me, the franchise fee and the fiber to the home. The franchise fee, we was able to defeat, and the fiber to the home, although I'm not against the idea, I think the $19 million price tag and the smart meter part is definitely something that needs to be addressed. I think it should be put to a vote of the citizens and the attitude that, well, if we put it to a vote, it wouldn't win because they don't understand it, doesn't seem very fair to me. I think I've got a lot of offer for the city, I've a lot of ideas. And being a business owner for a long time, I understand the economics of how a business should run, and I think the city should be run more like a business. That's all I have.
My name is Tim Fairchild, and I live at 517 West Fourth. And I, first of all, I'd like to thank, I've been at one other one of these and there hardly anybody showed up, but thanks for coming out, everybody. That's cool, I appreciate you taking an interest. And 12 people up here is something. I'm married, I've been married for 37 years to my wife Bridget. She teaches 5th grade at Sheneut Elementary. Got four adult children, four grandchildren, and I'm a Sheneut native, and I graduated from CHS in New York City. I'm a member of St. Patrick's Parish, and I've been working in banks since 1977. Personally, I think I could sum up my thoughts as saying, I think it's an obligation to participate in community life in a regular and active way. The reason I'm running is I believe in subsidiarity, and I was concerned with the financing of the internet business on our, by using our electric utilities. I was motivated by, because subsidiarity was an argument made by the commission that exists today in Topeka over Senate Bill 304, and then when it moved, the issue moved home, nobody was going to be allowed to vote, and I think we should vote. I want to stabilize the community ballot sheet and build resiliency in the government. I think there's a lot of risk at play right now in our community, and we need to take a look at that. And I want to increase the community engagement in the government by structured transparency. Here's what I'll do to lobby my fellow commissioners. I want to have community conversations regarding community development. I want database simple performance benchmarks that we can share on a regular basis. And I want to implement a program called Community First that structures regular places for citizens to come and have time to be listened to. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Randy Gilmore. I live at 205 North Grant. I moved to Sheneut in 1962 with my parents, John and Elsie Gilmore. My wife and I this year will celebrate our 30th wedding anniversary and have raised four great kids and have two wonderful granddaughters. They've all attended Sheneut schools. In the last 17 years, I've been owner and operator of Raven Printing with my partner Kevin Krupstrom. We operate two locations, one in Sheneut and one in Iowa. I started my working career in Sheneut when I was a kid. I'd started out as a carrier for the Sheneut Tribune. I did that for three years, and then I moved into Food Town and worked for Bob Olson, who was another great mentor. And I've had a short stand at Advanced Systems and worked with Stan Loubering. Before, after that, I became self-employed and have been self-employed for almost the last 40 years. I can tell you that I am here for the long haul. I work here for my family, my friends, and my town. Last several years, people have been encouraging me to run, and in lots of judgment, I decided to do it. And so hopefully, it'll all work out, but seriously, I think we are currently close to being a very productive town again, with a great foot of challengers here this evening, that how can we go wrong with the people that are here tonight? I look forward to serve with them as a friend or as a commissioner, and I look forward to the challenge ahead to represent Sheneut.
My name is Sam Boudreau. I live at 211 South Sunset. And the reason I'm running is very simple, I care about Sheneut. My family lives in Sheneut, my wife and I live here, we have family, we have friends. And the end result is, we're taxpayers and citizens just like the rest of you. I'm proud to be a resident of Sheneut, and when I return home from business or pleasure, when I come into town and I see that neon sign out there on the edge of the community, the first thing it says to me, we're home, we're back, we're back where we need to be. When you look at the state of affairs of what our country, state, and local governments are facing right now, you have to kind of step back and pause and ask yourself, how in the world are we going to be able to deal with any or all of this? The state of Kansas right now is embroiled in a deficit situation that has, we've never seen in the past. 200 and some million by June 30th, another 400 to 600 million after July 1, 500 and some million for not properly funding K-12. And anybody that doesn't think this is a perfect storm that's coming after us, we better just wake up and smell the coffee because it's right on our shoreline. So this is what I want. I want positive change, I want to see a positive city commission, I want to see a positive reaction between the citizens and the governing body. We have a lot to do, but we have to live within our means. I had a constituent, and I've been going door to door, said, hey, Sam, we support you, but you know what? You know, make your decisions when we elect you as if you're spending it out of your checkbook. I want to see positive growth, I want to see growth for our business and community to be aligned and working together. I want to see positive progress. We better have an actual plan and not just say we do. And folks, an external eye is on us, and we better be ready to deal with it. So the more we can learn how to communicate with each other and do it properly and better, the better off we're going to be. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Vern Bertho. I live at 1208 South Central here in Sheneut. I'm currently serving as a Sheneut City Commissioner and have served one year during this time as mayor. I'm married to my lovely wife Renee and have lived in Sheneut since 1971. I would say that the main motivating factor for me to seek reelection is the fact I am part of this current commission that has set the stage for growth and prosperity in our community. I want to be on the commission for another four years to protect this hard work and to see the fruits of our labor grow and manifest. We have several vehicles in motion that can take us down this road. Well, as a city commissioner, the Sheneut Regional Development Authority was formed with funding from the city. Once the CRDA was formed, we sought to establish the Neighborhood Revitalization Plan. I'm very involved in helping create and setting the standards of this program. I was a supporting voice, asking USD 14 to join with the city in participating. Once Neosho County came on board, Neosho County Community College joined in supporting the program that gave tax rebates to all within the county. This not only allows the citizens of Sheneut, but all the citizens of Neosho County to participate and benefit. The 35th Street Corridor, this area's been made available for future development. Opening it up allows additional investment opportunities in our community, commercial, residential, and residential are options that are currently being looked at by outside investors. These companies are looking to invest in our community. Industrial Revenue Bonds and Revolving Loan Fund continue to fund existing and new businesses, existing and new business and retaining and creating jobs. I've been a strong supporter of both of these. These are three examples of some of the work I've helped to create and support during my time as a city commissioner. Thank you.
My name is Kathy Wright, and I'm not going to tell you where I live. I claim the right to 12 children and a husband who is as good as they come. I have a bachelor's degree in psychology, a love for God and all people. I enjoy learning new things and I play well with others. The reason I mention this is the number one reason that people lose jobs is they don't play well with others. I am not a politician. I'm running for City Commissioner because I believe in Sheneut and America, that there is enough goodness in people in this town to make a positive difference, that given information, people will and can make good decisions for themselves, that big government is not a good thing. I've seen this city ran by business owners for a long time, and I have not seen this city growing in positive ways. There have been some good choices made, but there's also been many poor investments. I feel we should be listening to the people, and that commissioner's job is not looking for ways to invest the people's money. It's providing for the needs of the people as much as we are financially able. If progressive means going forward despite the cost or consequences for our citizens, then I am not progressive. We have progressive government at all levels. Progressive actually means the government running your life, not you. It's your choice. Thank you.
My name is Bernard Nyer. I live at 319 South Lafayette, Sheneut, Kansas. My phone is 431-6807. I'm sorry. The reason I'm running stemmed largely from some occurrences in the last few years. Primarily, everyone in town, as I was circulating the petition to bring a vote on the franchise fee continually asked me to run. And that my philosophy is real simple on that, is I believe that government is an expression of the people, people are not an expression of the government. If tomorrow, the people disappear, government will cease to exist because it lives off of our commerce and our prosperity. However, if tomorrow government disappears, the city will still be here because the people are still here. They may reform government, but I guarantee you it will be smaller, less intrusive, and have much lower taxes. And that's one of the reasons I'm running. Another reason I'm running is part of what's occurred in the paper today. I have lied to no one or about no one. My sole error was that I spoke to a reporter, I thought I made it clear to him that it was not to be repeated anyplace, but apparently I didn't offer the magic words. It's off the record. I would like to apologize to Mr. Willis. I did not take and intend to defame him in any way, somebody else had done that, I simply repeated what had been told me on that. And from that point, it's ended, and so we can move on. Thank you for your time.
And my name is John Odell. I think I've probably been up here more than anybody else. I would like to thank the chamber for this little get-together. As you noticed, all of my signs have been, they were transparent so that I wouldn't block anybody else's view. But I live at 1532 South Edith. I came out here 48 years ago and graduated from Neosho College in 1970. Been working around ever since, and I've run two different trucking companies. One, I brought two Sheneut from Humboldt. I've seen them go by the wayside because of poor management, they're no longer around. What motivated me to get back in the race again was the fact that after the last election, it looked like the voters had lost control of their local government. I want to step back, I want to be a facilitator, I want to bring back, bridge the gap between the commission and the voter. We need to have a lot more communication and cooperation, and that's one thing I hope to establish. I think it's just about time that we need to come back and bring public back into political service. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Martha McCoy, and I am from Sheneut. I've lived here pretty much all my life except for a few years when I left to pursue my career. My husband is Jim Cornish, and between us, we have 10 grandchildren and two on the way. I live at 627 Southwest View. The reason that I am rerunning for Commissioner is because many citizens came to me and wanted me to rerun again. They said that I had made a vast difference the last four years, being in office. I feel that I have a lot of knowledge and work to pursue more knowledge about all the issues at hand. I have much to give to the city of Sheneut. Sheneut is a great home. I left and have returned. I believe so greatly in Sheneut that I have made significant investments in Sheneut. Sheneut has so much potential to grow if guided by commissioners who have positive attitudes towards the city.
Is that better? Testing, one, two, three. Greg Woodyard, 910 South Evergreen. I graduated high school here back in 1998, after my parents had moved here a couple years before that. I moved around quite a bit as a kid, lived in four or five different cities, went off to college, at Emporia State University is where I graduated from, and then I moved to Wichita, actually thereafter, working for a large public accounting firm, doing various audits for state, local, and municipal governments. After that, I met my wife out in Wichita, and she is from Independence, Kansas, and she had two kids at the time. We made a group decision, a group decision to come back here to Sheneut because I thought it'd be an excellent place to raise a family because out of the five or six towns that I've lived in previously, this is a town that showed a lot of commitment to its citizens and to its community. I'd never felt that toward any other place that I've lived. Since then, I've worked at a public accounting office here in Sheneut, and now I currently work at a community-owned bank. Something wrong? Ready to talk?
Talk into Martha's.
Talking to Martha's? All right. I guess I... We're getting there. Is that, is that better? You got mine turned off? All right, is that better? All right, sorry, I'm very soft-spoken, I apologize. Anyway, I feel like I have a lot to offer as far as a commissioner's concerned. I've been on the commission for four years for that, I'm thankful for the citizens of Sheneut. It's been, it's been an honor for me to serve you guys. I'm very, very introverted individual. I don't like the public scene a whole lot, I don't like politics, to be quite honest with you. I do this because I feel as though I have something to offer, and that is my background as far as finance is concerned. Over the last four years, we've made a lot of decisions that might not have been popular decisions, but I feel as though that there are decisions that were made in the best, best effort for the citizens of Sheneut. I'm not up here to be the popular vote, I'm not up here to be the person that makes all the popular decisions, but I want to do what I feel is right for the citizens of Sheneut and for everybody that is involved. I'd like to thank you guys, I'd like to thank the chamber, and I'd like to thank Jonathan tonight for moderating us. Thank you.
Good. All right. I'm Philip Chaney, 217 South Larson. I was born and raised in Sheneut, Kansas, and before I went off in 1995 when I graduated to Pittsburgh State where I graduated and got my college degree, moved back home, which was a wonderful experience, started my own company and ran it. I'm currently working on a master's degree, but I work at Neosho Memorial Regional Medical Center right now. What motivated me to run was probably the same thing that motivated me eight years ago. Eight years ago, I ran trying to make a better community for my one son that I had at the time. I think made good progress the first couple of years, the last two years, not as much progress as I hoped. It motivated me to run again because I see, I feel that we've slipped back into the same rut. Now I'm running with three kids, so that helps a little bit more. I just feel that there's too much overspending and poor management on the side of some of the people inside the government. The main thing that motivates me to run is the budget, and that's usually where I kind of try to focus most of my efforts. I think that that tells us a lot about where our community's going. Such things as the last four years, we've spent $6 million out of our reserve fund, we've lost $1.3 million out of our general fund. The other parts, like the electric utility, I know that we're wanting to seek the fiber project and stuff like that, but I don't feel right now that we have full control over our electric utility. So it's things like that that I'm hoping to fix. We did lower taxes eight years ago whenever I was on there, I think that was the last tax decrease we've had on the mill rate, and I hope to get back on there and make those kind of adjustments again. I feel that we are overtaxed and our utilities are too high and not making the contributions that they should. Our electric utility ended the year last year with only $111,000 in the bank. When Randy and I left office four years ago, it had over $3 million in the bank. So those are the things that motivate me to run. I feel that our community could be in a much better position, both financially and with the utilities that we have. I feel that we have a wonderful community, that's part of the reason I moved back to Sheneut after college, is because I love the community, my family's been here and been here for many generations. Thank you.
Randy Gilmore, you'll be first at question two. The question is, what would you do to meet the city's budget demands while still providing needed city services? You have two minutes with this question.
Well, as it stands right now, the budget has grown since Phil and I were on their last. During that time, we managed to supply all the necessary services to, in the city and operated on a lower budget while improving or increasing our reserves plus reducing the indebtedness that we had in the community. I think that those days can be, come back again and that rather than focus on the mill levy and valuation, we actually need to focus on the actual dollars spent. Because what happens is, is it turns into a smoke and mirrors game. The valuation can go up, you can leave the mill levy the same, and you're still getting more money each year than you were prior. And so hopefully, we can meet the demands that way also. I just don't see for any reason that we can't continue to operate and give services unless you're talking about Fiber to the Home, which I feel like that project should be put to a vote of the people. They're smart enough to know whether or not they want it, and it's a decision that they need to make before the commission does. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, the first thing that we need to do to meet the city's budget needs and demands for providing services, I think, is to get our own house in order as a governing body. I'm not afraid of split votes or debate amongst commissioners, but we better understand what the priorities are and what those needs and services that we're going to have to provide to this committee actually entail. If we don't understand that, how in the world are we going to place money or figures to any portion or component of that? So I guess my first task would be ask the other governing body and the other commissioners, what are your priorities? I personally believe that we need to meet well ahead of anything being done to determine this course of action. I feel this is so important and critical before that we do this, that it even could cause us to overlook services that we don't want to give up. You know, when you just start cutting budgets, just start cutting budgets and start take, bring percentages out of budget, you might be giving up services that you and I do not want to give up or let go. So how can we even begin to look at this? Well, the city manager first is charged to prepare a balanced budget. That's what we've hired a city manager to do. But you are electing city commissioners to set policy. That is what we need to do as a city commission. Next, we better take a look at our projected revenues in order to compare them to those demands that we're going to be facing. Our utilities have been a godsend, as I've heard, and I totally can... Our utilities have been a godsend, as I've heard, and I totally concur with that. At this time, this year, we're transferring approximately $1.8 to $1.9 million out of our utilities to offset our property taxes so we don't have to look at raising ad valorem or property taxes. That is critical. Those revenues have, those utilities have been very, very important to us. The revenue shortfalls that we may be addressing have to, and the assessments that we need to be, should be looked at from multiple avenues. I can't express that anymore. My charge, if elected, would be to embrace this with a governing body and do my task that you've elected me to do.
Currently, we have a budget that's based on revenue, not expenses. The 2015 budget was structured to reflect the amount of projected revenue for this time period. The mill levy has not been increased while I've been on the commission. Truth is, the evaluation has gone up during this time for the whole county as well. Someday, Renee and I plan to sell our current home and would hope that its value was worth more then than it is now. When the mill levy was reduced several years ago, the revenue stream was cut without providing for the expenses of the city. Worse yet, there was no plan to provide for that, just a reduction. That is currently why we can't afford new fire trucks and equipment to replace out what is worn out. I was part of the commission that voted to add the 5% charge to the utility bill users in our service area. This money was to be used to buy these new fire trucks and equipment needed to maintain a safe and serviceable community. Additional funds will be needed to meet these demands. If anyone is saying they're going to cut your taxes and reduce spending, they're just telling you what they think you want to hear. These candidates do not have a true understanding of the condition of our community or its financial needs. The real challenge will be in 2006 and 2016 and 2017 budget cycles. During these years, Neosho County and all the cities in Neosho County will see a reduction of at least $31 to $50 million in property tax evaluation. This reduction is a direct result of changes to state statute on property taxes for cement producers. Oil and gas evaluations have also decreased. To offset this situation, Shenoot needs commissioners that have experience in creating and approving revenue-based budgets that address the true needs of the community. Thank you.
I recognize there's much that I must learn when it comes to the city budget. It's not as simple as borrow from this fund so we can meet this demand. However, the job of commissioner is not to solve all the city's problems. The job of a commissioner is to use the resources in place to best meet the needs of the community and to encourage cooperation, trust, and unity within the city. I have successfully managed several home businesses for other people. With any budget, you must have an end goal. My goal for the city of Shenoot's budget would be to spend less than we receive in revenue, to provide for our employees, to see that our police force has the means they need to cut crime and drugs in our community, to look closely at where the city's money is being spent so we can make better use of our resources, to make a priority list of needs, not wants, and work down the list. I see city employees of one of our best assets in sharing their opinion of where we can improve, or in other words, what works for them and what doesn't. When I say employees, I don't just mean department heads, although they are also a good resource. For a long-term goal, how about this idea that the city of Shenoo is totally debt-free? I understand that we have lost quite a bit of money in revenue. However, I feel like that we can still meet the needs of the citizens and keep our equipment up to date on sources that we actually need if we don't waste money on investing in projects that have brought us no return. Thank you.
Yes, I'm trying to figure out where we got a loss of revenue here because in 2010, I'm looking at the certified budgets from the county, in 2010, our revenue was one-half of what it was now. Ash Grove came online. Everybody talks about Ash Grove's appealing, its evaluation and that. The only appeal they have is for 2012 and 2013. It did not appeal the 2011 taxes, and it has a little discrepancy they had for the 2014 taxes, which is what we use to fund the 2015 year. The 2010 revenue here was, if I'm not mistaken, it was on, that funds the general fund was about 1.6 million, and we're sitting about 3.3 million, which actually represents only approximately less than 10% of the budget. There was a time in our history when we had no taxes levied by the city, and that ran from 1931 to 1960. If I'm not mistaken, about 1960, they started having a city manager form of government. Prior to this, in the year 2000, we actually had a property tax that was below 30 mills. As the value of a property rises, and it rises every year, and that the amount of money coming into the city increases. So I don't know where this revenue shortfall came from, except that they spent it. And now, my goal is that I think the people earn the money, it's their money, they should decide what to do with it. I see my time's up. Thank you very much. We'll talk more in a little bit.
Now, I'm going to say the same thing I have for the last five times I've been up here. What we need to do is start purging the waste from the city budget. That would save considerable right there. And then we need to initiate a hiring freeze, initiate a spending freeze until, unless approved by all commission members, anything over $2 million ought to be approved by the voters. If we cut, cut back on the, everybody's their private, "I want" jobs. Personal priorities for commissioners is running this, it's breaking this. But if we were to just take those out of the budget, we could reduce our reliance on the utility fund. Dropping that back would give people more money to spend downtown, which they don't have right now.
I have researched the budget and have seen where we are making some unneeded expenditures. Looking at some of these significant present expenditures, I believe instead of hiring outside contractors, we should hire in-house people to fill different jobs such as city engineer and city technical positions. These companies that we have hired have done a good job for us, but we need to cut our expenses. Shenoot is located in one of the poorest and least developed areas of the state. I don't see a lot of help coming from the state. So if Shenoot is going to prosper, we have to band together and do it ourselves.
Can you hear me this time? All right, budget issues. In 2007, started 2007, our city debt was 44.9 million. By the end of 2010, our city debt was 46.4 million for an increase of 1.5 million. I started in 2011 at that 46.4 million in debt. By the end of 2014, our debt had dropped to 32.4 million for a drop of 14 million. So when people ask where the cash reserves were, they went to pay down debt. This last year, we, our cash went down probably about $200,000 overall. 800,000 of that was to a utility deposit that we had to make for our utilities. So it's not a true loss of money, it's just money that went out of the city's funds went elsewhere. So we would have actually grown our cash reserves last year if it wasn't for this. We as a city, also in the four years since I've been on, we haven't increased our mill levies. We've been providing the city services that are much needed and have been needed in the same fashion that we always have. This is even during the economic downturn when we got lower sales tax revenues. Yes, we do have increased property tax revenues because we haven't dropped our mill or increased our mill, but just because valuations have gone up. The reason that I think I would be a good candidate going forward is we still got Ash Grove assessment issues that we are dealing with. Each year, we set aside about half the money we receive from Ash Grove on their property tax valuations and put it into a fund that we might have to pay back at a later date. So all in all, as the budget process comes near, I think it's something that we all need to strive together to figure out what our needs and what we're wanting to do for the future and try to get those involved into the budget process going forward.
Well, I think it obviously makes a clear difference. I think you can see a difference of opinions even on this stage. As far as some people that say that cutting taxes are bad, that we cut taxes seven, or seven and eight years ago, we cut 11 mills out of the budget. I don't think any services got hindered at all. I know that there's many times that they would show up and ask for new fire trucks saying that they were outside of their life cycles. Most of those life cycles are about 10 years, and we don't use our fire trucks in any, I mean, near as much as we, thank God, we don't have to, but we don't have their fire trucks. They're not using, getting the uses they need that we have to replace them all the time. So I think it just is very clear that when somebody states that they don't want to cut the budget, they don't want to cut it because all they do is think it's going to cut, cut into all these services. Well, we did it eight years ago, and nothing was changed. There was fundamental overspending in budgets and for multiple departments. Electric department, let's just, over the last couple of years, losing $400,000 a year the last two years. That's with $24 million worth of sales. And that's with our electric department having an extra $1.3 million this year, and they still lost money. Our gas department in the last two years has went from 1.1 million to 300,000. Last year, our revenues were down 9.5%, however, our spending was up 2.8%. Those are the kind of budget decisions that I don't agree with. That's part of the reason that I'm running. Our general fund budget since 2001, the last budget that I signed, has gone up $1.7 million. So when they say they haven't raised the mill rate, they've still increased spending. We're still spending way more money than we have in our history. The general fund, $7.7 million, highest it's ever been. I think just the spending's out of control. Agree with Martha that I think we take advice from the wrong people. I think we bring in these consultants that are only going to get rich on our backs. They're going to tell us that these projects are great. They're going to tell us all the stuff that we need to do, and all it is is so that they can bill out more money. And part of the, like the fiber optic project, I would just, would reiterate that I think that we just need to have a vote on it, and I think that we all get behind it and support it as a community if we just get the real numbers, have a vote on it, and if we could see if it's actually going to pay for itself. Thanks.
Questions are funny things because inside the question itself often lies a pregnant assumption and a hidden direction of what the answer should look like. Take the question, what would I do to meet the city budget's demands, for example? What is inherent in this question is the belief that somehow, as a commissioner, I need to figure out a way to feed the beast. I need to come up with some clever way to oil the machine to extract another dollar from the populace. That's not the question in my mind. The question in my mind is, how do I first understand the desires of her citizens and what they are willing to pay for? How do I obtain real feedback from them without the current structure and culture of intimidation? How about these questions? What happened to our budget surplus four years ago? Why has this entity spent every dime and then some? Why do we think borrowing $19 million is the right thing to do when we can't even keep up our local parks and can't scrape together 40,000 here and 20,000 there for civic obligations? Why do we keep hiding fiber costs under our electric utility? Why is it so hard to get transparent budget numbers? Why do we believe that the way to prosperity as a city is to borrow money? Why can't we live within our means? Why would we not allow the citizens of Shenoot to vote on their future with a $19 million bond issue? The question is not how would I find a way to meet the city's budget demands, but rather, when are we collectively going to stop the tail from wagging the dog? How would I suggest meeting the city's budget demands? First of all, by setting reduction targets, and then by requiring the entity to live within this means. We, the people, are the masters, not the servants of this city. A more relevant question to ask is this: When will the city stop their addiction to spending ever larger sums of our money?
I guess I would be willing to make the choices that may be unpopular to prevent raising taxes or creating new fees or raising utility rates just to keep funding the city's appetite for more money, more spending. Many, too many of the citizens in Shenoot are living paycheck to paycheck, and they have to budget their households very carefully to make sure that they can, they have the money they need for their children and for their future. And the city needs to do the same thing. We need to quit spending out of control and make some cuts if they need to be made. I think all this can be done without jeopardizing any services.
Well, I think the first thing, the simple answer to the question is that you have to work with your fellow commissioners to agree to a plan. And I think the plan ought to be based first on needs. And I think most people in the community can recognize what those needs are. Utilities, fire trucks, policemen, those are needs. And so we need to look at those over a short term and a long term, and we need to make a plan. An example is when it comes to equipment purchases. I think we ought to have a wish list, and the wish list should be perpetual, and it should be pretty well established and among all different departments so that we know this year we're going to buy a fire truck this year, next year we're going to buy a trash truck or whatever we need. So those needs are less contentious than some other things. Mainly, what I want to do is build confidence in our services that we're doing it as efficiently as we can by regular periodic review of results. I want the commission to be results-oriented, and the way that we do this is develop a way to speak about our results. I think frequent comparisons, simple things like a monthly review of how our expenditures are matching our budget gives the commission greater control over expenditures. We want to make sure the data is clear and simple so that everybody can understand it so that just with a nod, they can check in and see how we're doing. I think by doing that, people are going to be more willing to get involved and voice their opinions, which is an important part to good government.
We will now move on to question three.
Martha McCoy will be first on this question. The question is, what do you see as Shenoot's strengths and weaknesses in this economic climate? And what are your economic development priorities to attract and retain job growth? You have two minutes.
Shenoot offers a great quality of life for the residents. We have a first-rate school system from kindergarten to community college that can even have the lifetime learning forever. We have quality-of-life facilities, a new aquatic center, a golf course, Shenoot Recreation Center, banking institutions, strong churches, the fire escape for the youth, the Faith House homeless shelter for those in need, and food pantries for those in need. Those are our strengths that we have here in Shenoot. Our weaknesses, our greatest weakness, is our aging infrastructure above and below ground. We must continue to spend money to upgrade that infrastructure to preserve the health and welfare of our citizens. The most important step the city can take is to develop our fiber optic system so we can give our youth the technical knowledge for the future and also pursue economic development to attract and maintain growth within the city. Information and technology is our future. We must all get on board or be left behind.
Thank you. I think, like I said, I moved here back in 2007 because I thought Shenoo was a great community, and I saw that Shenoo had a lot of great things going for it. We've got state-of-the-art hospital facility, we got state-of-the-art public school systems, we got one of the state's largest and growing community colleges at Neosho County Community College. We've got a hike and bike trail that goes almost all the way around the city. We got a brand-new aquatic center. We've got nice golf courses. We've got a lot of things going on in this town that are very, very nice and very good quality-of-life issues. Going forward, though, what I see as one of the biggest weaknesses is we got an aging population. We got a baby boomer age that is getting ready to retire. And in order to, in order to fill those positions and fill those jobs that are going to be left open by those baby boomers, we're going to have to attract citizens that are younger, citizens that are hungry, citizens that want to progress in their careers and make big strides in their careers. And as going forward, we're going to have to figure out how are we going to attract those citizens here. I think fiber is one of the way to do those. I know I myself, I like data, I like information, I'm always on the internet. I know my kids are always on the internet watching YouTube videos, Netflix, Hulu. They're always surfing the web. So as that, that's going to be something that's very needed going forward, and I And I see about five to 10 years out, that us as a community, we're not going to be able to sign up for cable services. We're going to have to sign up for them over the internet through data. HBO is already coming out with that. You've got the ESPN three channels. You've got a lot of them that are going to database subscription services only, so you're going to have to go out there and sign up. But that's one of the biggest weaknesses I see for our community is what are we going to do to attract those younger generation? And then also housing. Housing is going to be the next major issue that Chanute faces. It's where to find medium-level income homes for citizens to buy within this community. Thank you.
Well, I agree with, I mean, a lot of our assets and stuff that we have, but I think our utilities is by far our biggest advantage that we have, our biggest strength and our biggest weakness right now. I mean, I think our utilities is what's going to drive our entire community. I think when our utilities are strong, our community's strong. When our utilities are weak, I think our city's weak. And I think it just proves to the fact right now that I think there's only two things that we can control, that the city can control. There are taxes and your utilities. I think adding the fiber and stuff like that would be like icing on a cake or something like that, but I don't think right now that's what's going to turn our city around or make us prosperous in the future. The company that's closing tomorrow, 30 jobs tomorrow, that these people are going in for their last day of work that's closing Chanute, Fiber to the Home's not going to save that company. That's not what that company is asking for. That company wasn't going to stick around if we would've got Fiber to the Home. We've got to control the things that we can control, our taxes and our utilities. And I'm just saying that our utilities are broken right now as far as I'm concerned. If I just take a quick comparison on my last month's utility bill of 2,345 kilowatts, my bill in Chanute is 24, or $245 for that electric. In Iola, it's $240. I know $5 doesn't sound like a lot of money, but Chanute's the reseller to Iola. I mean, Chanute set up an electric group to resell to these other communities. So we're the wholesaler that's supposed to benefit our community on stuff like this to make us more money and stuff, and yet whenever we sell it out of town, it gets cheaper. Just other quick comparisons on the electric utility. Money in the bank, Iola, 3.2 million. City of Chanute at the end of last year, unencumbered cash, $111,000. Transfers to the general fund that Sam spoke on, 1.7 million overall. Iola, $3.4 million. We have $24 million worth of sales. They had $12 million worth of sales. Part of the reason that I'm running is that I want to help this. I want to strengthen our utilities and stuff because that is what makes, that's what we've lived on for the last 100 years. That's what's built our community. Like Bernie talked about, we had no taxes and the lowest utilities in the state. That's when we were on the cover of the Kansas City Star, when we were the city on the hill. Everybody was looking to us for stuff like that. Fiber optic, many communities have it. Chanute adding it would be neat, but can we afford it right now is my question. Thanks.
To answer the question, I think we need to look at the big picture first. Chanute is really just a very small boat floating in the swimming pool of a cruise ship known as the state of Kansas. The state of Kansas is in turn floating in the ocean known as the United States. And since 2007, the start of the Great Recession, the federal government has gone on a gigantic borrowing and spending spree, turning $4 trillion of debt into $17 trillion of debt. Our unfunded liabilities on the national level are estimated between 88 to 128 trillion dollars. At the state level, we are fighting with the small oops. 344 million shy for the current budget and another 600 million projected shortfall for 2015, '16. North of here at the ANW Co-op, I understand layoff notices are being contemplated. East of here in Erie, the county is dealing with shortfalls. South of here at the Juco, they're trying to save money by refinancing loans at a lower interest rate. West of here, at USD 413, they are dipping into reserve funds. And the city finds itself wondering how to pay bills after the electorate demanded a refund on their franchise fee. The era of free money is dead. It's starting to dawn on people that even grants are nothing more than money out of their pockets going from one taxing entity back to another. My suggestions to this small boat called Chanute: Quit spending money we don't have. As bonds mature, don't replace them with more new loans. Put the savings in the bank. Lower the tax rate to attract new businesses. Quit looking for economic home runs and swinging at the fence. Take base hits in the form of sustainable growth. Institute a fiber network only if voters approve. Dump the smart meter plan. Keep Neighborhood Revitalization Act intact. And finally, batten down the hatches, go slow, and lighten our debt burden.
The economic climate today is, is not good for any city, any state, and it hasn't been for quite a while. Chanute's strengths is definitely our schools. We have a vital main street that has grown, actually, when the times have been tough in other towns. I think our economic priorities should be to stop spending money and try to make do with what we have, not cut any services, but not necessarily borrow $19 million to buy fiber. You know, let's do it incrementally if we want to do it, and let the citizens vote on it. I agree, dump the smart meter charge. That's just putting another burden on people that are living paycheck to paycheck. That's about it.
I like, I think that when we talk about economic development, it's better to talk about it in terms of community development. And community development is either development in the community or it's development of the community. We've done a lot of development in the community. It's a technical approach. It's bricks and mortar. It's hiring experts and consultants and spending type of thing. What I'm interested in is development of our community. And that's the belief that we should be involving all parts of the community in deciding our future. So community development is an adaptive challenge. So community dynamics are such that there's really no silver bullet. If there was, we'd all shoot that bullet. Communities constantly change and we, and they adapt. Job growth requires that we understand our current situation first. In order to develop our community, we need an approach that really is different than a strength, weaknesses, opportunities, and threat type of thinking. Development of strengths requires input from all of our community. Our community should be, our approach to community development should be asset-based. We ought to focus on what is internally possible by talking to each other and based on relationships and working with each other. Historically, if you look at Chanute, the best results have come from entrepreneurs. All of our businesses that are here are from people that grew up here in Chanute. So due to the, the nature of this question, I had put my thoughts on paper and it ended up in the Tribune, and I brought them with me because, two minutes. I encourage you, if you want a copy of that, I'll give it to you after the meeting. Thanks.
Well, I'm going to echo what Phil was saying about the electric utility is one of our strongest weapons we can use in economic development. In a few years, about five, that we will pay off one of our major bonds, and we will have about $4.7 million in unencumbered cash that we can take and use those monies to reduce utility costs, taxes, or rebuild our reserves. When you're in a liquid, liquid position, you are stronger. And by using those, taking those same revenues and reducing our rates, we could possibly attract high-energy users to our, as far as businesses to our town by not offering a lower rate. We should offer the lowest rate available in the state. If it is, it's a weapon. Let's use it. Let's use it to grow our town and quit trying to find the other magic bullet. That's something that will work. It just baffles me that we have this utility and we just want to have competitive rates. I mean, I don't know why anybody purchases something or owns and operates something to do it at the same price as everybody else. With that, we can marginalize our weaknesses. We're going to have weaknesses in our community. Everyone has them. We just need to focus on our strengths and really push that throughout the state. Thanks.
Well, surprisingly, I agree with several candidates up here in regard to our utilities. That's, they are at the core of our existence and our ability to be an economic player in the, in the large scheme of things. In regard to the debt service, I also agree with Randy in regard to the fact that in a few years here, we're going to be able to pay down our debt. And the reason of that is because we've taken the steps that's needed to pursue an aggressive debt service and to pay off those bonds in a very rapid, a continuum of where we're trying to get out of debt. At the same time, that's, that's placing on us a situation that Phil's talking about in regard to our fund balances, and then those are coming down because our aggregate debt service and those payments are impacting us in some of those areas. I do, however, believe you've got to look at a scorecard. And a scorecard regarding economic development is when that external eye is looking in on us, you know, what is that scorecard and what are they going to ask and want to see? I heard about the quality-of-life issues. Check, check, check. All those things are starting to come down the line, and we're starting to look impressive. They're looking at our utilities. Check, check, check. Those things all add up on the scorecard, and we're starting to start, become really attractive. But I think our weakness is in regard to economic development is the fact that we're not out there amongst the, the real retailers that are actually looking to find places. There's summits. There's conferences. There's all kinds of scenarios out here in the country where those people are being brought to a forefront and they're being pursued, if, for the, for the right word, they're being pursued and they're by other companies. So at that point in time, how competitive can we be and how aggressive can we be to get them to Chanute? I think we need to be aggressive. I think we need to be united. And I think that's our core direction as a commission is to set those policies.
I believe that Chanute's greatest strength is its citizens. Chanute has a large group of people that work hard every day in and, every day in and out to make better lives for themselves and their families. It's because of this dedication that the city of Chanute has accomplished so much for over 100 years now. Next, I would say that Chanute, being a full-service community, is also an economic strength. By owning all of our utility services, we're in a position to attract business and industry. Utility infrastructure is one of the main components looked at by prospective expansion. Chanute's partnership with companies like Ash Grove, Hilo Industries, and many others shows that the city is willing and able to assist with their economic growth. By creating the CRDA, we have a strong voice in recruiting businesses and industry into our community. The CRDA is also working with local companies to expand and grow. We also have a Neighborhood Revitalization Plan that has promoted growth and investment in our city and our county. Homes are now being built inside the city limits of Chanute. This has not happened for many years in our community. We do have weaknesses, and I believe the main one is money. Funding is being cut at both the state and federal levels. Our local funds will be reduced because of the $31 to $50 million reduction in property tax over evaluation over the next two to four years. We also lack the proper high-speed technology that many businesses need and expect in this age. My priorities will be to continue the CRDA, the Neighborhood Revitalization Plan, the revolving loan fund. I also believe that we need to continue to explore the high-speed fiber project. Through these programs and the continued support of the city, I feel we can attract and retain jobs and growth. Thank you.
If Tim didn't have a typewritten page in front of him, I would've said he was reading off a mine. I also agree that our citizens are our number-one strength, and that we own our own utilities is a strength, especially in these economic times. I consider that Ash Grove is a strength to our community. It provides good jobs and extra revenue for us. I see our location as a strength because we have room to grow and we're not too far from places like Kansas City and Joplin. The only weakness that I could think of was the cost of our homes and property in this area. I had a friend that was recently looking to move to this area, and he wasn't able to find, they weren't able to find housing that pleased them, and they're now looking in the Iola area. So I did some research. Overall, Iola is just 2% less expensive of a community to live in, but their housing is actually 9% cheaper than what we have to offer here in Chanute. I would like to, instead of measuring the success by our city revenues and economic development, measure it instead by if... I figured this happened at least once tonight. I've only got 15 seconds, so thank you.
I happen to agree with Kevin and Kathy that the people are our greatest strength. When I was collecting signatures, when I was knocking on doors, standing on their ports in their living rooms, when little old ladies were hugging me, thanking me for what I did because they were struggling, I realized that they stayed here. They didn't pick up and leave. They were weathering the storm. We have the strongest people in the world, I think. We live in the best city, in the best state, in the best country in this world. You don't hear that anymore from anybody, so I'm going to say it today. And I'll say it again. We live in the best city, in the best state, in the best country in the world. We can weather this storm, but we have to remember, as Thomas Jefferson said, "I predict future happiness for Americans if they could prevent the government from wasting the labors of the people under the pretense of taking care of them." Government can create no jobs. Imagine our economy is a bucket, a bucket full of water. Government comes in and takes taxes out, it lags it out. Then it's going to say, okay, we're going to raise the economy, and it puts a little bit back in. That isn't raising the economy. That's just barely returning it to where it was before it started taking some of the money out. I want to return the money to the people. I want to reform government, reduce spending, cut taxes, and as I said, return the money to the people. It is their money. They earned it through the sweat of their brow and the break of their back. And nobody up here at this city commission, I think, either wiped their brow or lightened their load. And in fact, in some cases, they were marginalized, ostracized, and put down. The biggest problem we have is apathy, and I think with the vote of the franchise fee, that shows you, if people stand up, we could be counted, and we can make a difference. Thank you.
I'll start on three. Yeah, talking about Chanute's strengths and the weaknesses in the economic climate. And believe it or not, one is on both sides. A city-owned utilities should be a strength because traditionally, city-owned utilities are less than what it is on the outside. The only trouble is, our city-owned utility's been turned into a magic treasure chest to grab money out of whenever, I need an extra mate. Well, let's kick up the fuel a little bit, put it back in there. Another, another plus would be, we have plenty of housing. It's getting rather expensive for renting in this town, but we do have more housing we need right now. We have great schools. We have a terrific medical facility here in Chanute. And we do have some sound economic development programs. However, that goes to the weakness side too because they have been abused. They have been poorly administered. There is too much protectionism in town. I tried to bring jobs here 15 years ago. I was told, go somewhere else. You're not wanted here. Yeah, thank goodness Parsons seems to be promising. Things looking better down there. But it's time to buckle down. Let's get things going. We've got to change these programs. Get the people to stand by, and let's go.
Okay, we'll now move to the fourth and final question of the night. Tim Fairchild, you'll be first with this question. Tim Fairchild, you'll be first with this question. What is your vision for Chanute in the next 10 years? You have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Really, I understand the question, but I don't think it's about my vision. I mean, I have ideas, but I'm just one of the people. What I think we need to do is work on this broadly-held community vision. I think it can make us different from other places and it will make us an even more special place on the planet. It would take everybody to pitch in and to help us realize our potential. It's going to require that we choose wisely, but also are willing to take some intelligent risks. We'll have to be open and we have to be vulnerable in order to develop this discussion, I think. It's difficult to be honest when the issues are somewhat emotional, but we have to figure out a way to have those conversations on a regular basis. I have several ideas that would, I'd put forth as a suggestion for this vision and I'll share those. I have four. These are the things that I would like in some way as a community to work for. The government is just a piece of this. Every family in our zip code area has the ability and opportunity to provide for their basic needs and experience stability. Every children graduates from high school and at the time of their graduation has a realistic and reliable plan for meeting basic needs and/or in some formal way continuing their own personal development. Each resident has regular and ongoing opportunity to realize their full potential and our zip code area is free of poverty and related symptoms such as crime, drug abuse, and domestic violence. And I think those would be great components of a broadly-held community vision.
I guess I'm confident in just over 10 years, if we manage it properly and take the funds that are coming available in the next five years, that we could use those funds to reduce indebtedness and reduce our electrical rates and further lower our taxes. I can see where we would allow citizens to vote on controversial spending issues of over $1 or $2 million that aren't considered emergencies. We would have a city commission elected in districts or precincts so citizens will know they have someone in their neighborhood who represents them. Campaigns will cost less because you would only need to focus on your particular constituents. An almost transparent operation where we would record gatherings or meetings, especially work sessions and budget meetings, that we would record and broadcast them. When someone requests information at the city, our city employees won't have to cringe to fill the needs and requirements. Future commissioners will consider the workload of its employees before looking to the stars for new projects. That new ideas will come from within, not from a bureaucrat or a hired gun from outside that will never live in our city. That's the future I hope to see.
Thank you. Well, I guess what I would like to be able to say, the vision was, I would like to be able to say that I served you well and that I was part of your master plan that made our home here in Chanute a better place to live. I'd like to be able to say that businesses could operate and prosper and it was a safe place for all of us. I would also like to say that I was able to influence change and growth and completion of projects that for years have been set aside and should have been taken care of far before now. Just an example of that is an emergency water supply. In the event of a spill or something in the Osho County River, do you realize that we only have a couple days of water right at our fingertips? Emergency water supply right at the tip of our, for all of us to sustain ourself and our life. I'd like to see the 35th Street corridor developed. I'd like to see it be the showplace of our community so that when we come in and out of our community and visitors coming in and out of our community, they can be proud of what they see. And then as they go down that archway and take it down 35th Street to Santa Fe and then we turn left and we head down toward the main street, we can see all of this growth and we can say, and we say, "Hey, this is my town. I'm proud of it. We did this. We've accomplished a lot." So 10 years does mean a lot and it's a lot to accomplish, but another vision that I can tell you that I think that needs to be addressed and it's so important right now in regard to our housing, we have young couples and individuals that are trying to move to Chanute or professionals and they have no place to stay. The federally subsidized housing that we have, they can't find apartments. We need to have duplexes and other housing for those couples to be able to come to Chanute and be a viable component of our community. And with that, I would close that if you elect me to be your city commissioner, I will do the best that I can for all of us and not just any one component. That's my pledge.
My vision for Chanute is to live in a community that is growing and progressive. I see a city that has a proactive role in the economic development of our community. I see expansion along the 35th Street corridor area, which will create a larger tax base. I see a community in which the aging citizens have a better quality of life because advancements in technology. I see a community that is able to attract young families to stay and grow, to old together. We will be a city that has reduced our debt by 50% in the next five years. In 10 years, we will be debt-free. We must have growth, sustainable growth, that will continue to help fund the needs of our community. We have several items in the near future that we will need to be addressed. The inflow and infiltration sewer issue, the replacement and upgrade of equipment in all areas of operation, the continued need to maintain and repair our streets, our parks, and our infrastructure. The reduction of funds from the state and federal governments and the reduction of funds from a lower property tax evaluation caused by changes in state statute will also have an effect on our future. I hope to see a city commission in the next 10 years that is progressive and is positive about growth in the community. Thank you for allowing me the time tonight to share my thoughts and feelings with the
I struggled with this question until I went to my scriptures. Then I realized what I really wanted for Chanute in 10 years, that we, the people, will be the most content, peaceful, and happy people in America. In Luke, 1 Timothy, and Hebrews, the Lord tells us to be content with such things as you have, your wages, your food, and reignment. We came into this world with nothing and it's certain we can carry nothing out. Denmark has taken the top spot on the United Nations' first-ever World Happiness Report done in 2012, published by Columbia University's Earth Institute. This study took a variety of factors into account, including people's health, access to healthcare, family relationships, and job security, as well as social factors like political freedom and government corruption. There is no pressure to climb the social ladder or to be the wealthiest person in town. In fact, they have high taxes, so weather can be dreary and in the winter it is dark most of the day. Their low expectations equal less disappointments. The people would rather ride a bicycle than have a car. Trust is another factor in the Danes' life. The people in Denmark are happy because they are content with what they have. We can become like the Danes. I would like to share an experience that I had recently with a city employee. I was upset about a utility bill and I have to admit that I was not a very nice person. I contacted the city and talked with a man I'll call Bob. Well, Bob and I thought we communicated, but we didn't. So a few days later, when I was even more upset, I was determined that it was going to hit the fan. You know, one of those times that you come to a meeting, just your mind's made up and you're determined? Well, the second phone call, I got a second employee and she did a wonderful job and that's the quality of people we have in Chanute and we can become like that. And my vision for Chanute is neighbors helping neighbors and being content. Sorry, Bernie.
Didn't need up my time, it starts now. My vision for Chanute, who cares? I want to be your first assistant in achieving your vision. We've got too many people on our city commission now that's stapling their vision to this city. I want to help you achieve your vision. Iron Rand had an Atlas struggle, so when you see that in order to produce, you need to obtain permission from the men who produce nothing. When you see that money is flowing to those who deal not in goods but in favors, when you see that men get richer by graft and pull rather than work, and your laws don't protect you against them, but protect them from you, when you see corruption being rewarded and honesty becoming self-sacrificed, you know your society is doomed. That almost explains some of what goes on in this community. I want to change that, but I want your vision to be preeminent. We talked about the revitalization plan here. What is a revitalization plan? It's lower taxes. You know, you've got to jump through some hoops. I don't want to have people jumping through hoops. I want to give everybody a tax break. That way, they don't have to come up and beg permission to do something. They can do it on their own and of their own volition. We've heard about how debt service has gone down, but the interest rates have gone down and simply redoing the bonds would have created that same thing regardless of who had been on the city commission on that. So once again, my number is 431-6807 if anybody wants to call me. You people are my heroes. You achieved a lot this last year and I want to thank some of the other commissioners up here and that Phil Cheney, Tim Erickson, Dave Williams, Tim Fairchild, Randy Gilmore, Kathy, and Mr. Odell.
You're taking my time.
Okay. For everything that you've done and your support you have given me, thank you very
My vision for Chanute is, first, let me read a little article I cut out of the paper here a couple of years ago. It says, "100 years ago, Chanute's industries exclusive of Santa Fe Railway furnished employment for $1,000, then with a total payroll amount of $95,000 each month. The city boasts 18 manufacturing plants producing such items as cement, brick, glass, ice, and oil and gas drilling equipment. There are 116 retail businesses and four wholesale establishments." I say, "Take me back to the good old days." I would like to see a Chanute where, when my son graduates from high school, he can get a job if he decides to get married and settle down. Let them do it in Chanute. It's going to take everybody out there and good people up here to let that happen. I'm asking for your support to, let's get Chanute moving. They talk about, you know, people up there say, "Ah, we're progressing." I said, "What is progress?" Progress is moving forward. I don't think we're moving forward.
The vision for Chanute in the next 10 years, I'd like to be able to maintain the present family atmosphere that we currently have while also having the economic stability to bring in new businesses, to continue to offer the excellent police and fire protection, and also to have a backup plan for clean water if Chanute does enter a drought. I hope we can continue our excellent healthcare facilities that we currently have. I want to see us be the frontrunner in technology and to prepare for this future and I hope I can be part of having this vision appear.
A vision for Chanute. Chanute, much like any business, has shareholders. Those shareholders are the citizens of that community and as an elected official, I think it's our duty to maximize shareholder value or citizens' value. In doing that, we've got to run Chanute as a business and make sure that we're maximizing those benefits to our shareholders, which are our citizens. Part of my plan or part of my vision for that is reducing our debt load over the next five years by $20 million, which is currently on the books and set to do. Another part of my vision is to try to get this fiber optic thing completed and get that done and get that going and getting that as another revenue stream for our shareholders, for our citizens. With the fiber optics, what it does is it leaves that money within this community. It doesn't go off to Phoenix, Arizona, it doesn't go off to Canada, it doesn't go off to wherever you might have your service provider from, but Chanute is there, your service provider. So those payments that you make to Chanute would be for that service and for that service provider and it would stay within this community. It'd also create jobs within this community that would roll dollars back through this community by paying property taxes and whatnot. At the end of the day, once we get all our debt paid off for not only the fiber optic plan, but for the utilities that is currently on our books, we will have, we'll have about a $5 to $6 million increase in revenue each year or cash each year. With that, what you can do is you can lower your mill levies, you can lower your property taxes, which provides that value back to the citizens. It's in essence like paying a dividend. And then once, at some point in time, once you get that accomplished, then you can start lowering utility rates. This isn't a two-year plan, this isn't a five-year plan, this isn't a 10-year plan. This is more like a 20-year plan, but it's got to take a vision and it's got to stay, somebody to stay the course to make that plan work. Thank you.
Well, I hope that our 10-year vision is a stronger and tighter community. I think there's a lot of strengths in this community. I think we have, you know, utilities and schools and hospitals and everything else, all these benefits that we have, but I think we have to stop trying to push growth onto things. I guess I come from the school of thought that government's better when it's out of the way. I don't think government needs to be the leading charge. I don't think we need to be the ones that are funding these businesses. I don't think we need to be bringing in all this stuff. The fiber optic, I mean, if we could vote on it, show me the numbers where it'll pay for itself and it borrows money on itself, then that's fine, then let's talk about it. But if we're going to sit there and borrow it on the backs of our electric and gas utility, the numbers still are in question even from the roundtable we had and the fact that it can't borrow money on itself is what I concern. But that's what, over the next 10 years, I just hope that we can at least all come together behind a single vision rather than everybody. It seems like right now, everybody has their own vision or, like they said, everybody wants to put their own stamp on the community and stuff. I don't want to put my stamp on the community. I want to get out of the way so that the community can grow from within because that's all it ever has. If you look at all of our businesses right now that are all successful, that are major employers in our community and stuff like that, they're all homegrown businesses. And I think that's part of the problem is that now we're getting it where we want to put the government in front. When people show up, when I was on the council and they'd ask, you know, "What are you going to do for more jobs in the community?" Well, I'd rather get out of the way. I mean, I think with lower utilities and lower taxes, the businesses can grow, then they can hire more people. Or if somebody wants to be like what I did, when I went off to college and I moved back home and started my own small business, that's what we want. Those are the people that we want. The choices weren't, "What was the government going to do for me?" It should be that I want to come back because the government's not going to get in my way. So I just hope that that's what we see in 10 years. I hope we are out of the way. I hope we have more small businesses, more industry and everything like that, rather than trying to think that the government's what moves industry. I mean, I just, I guess I live by the same rule of thought as what Reagan said, that government's not the, is not the solution to the problem, that the government is the
In the business world, vision statements are developed by senior management and flowed down. Everybody marches to the tune because the CEO dictates it. But the city of Chanute is really not a business. We are an outreach and extension of the people we serve. A vision of Chanute needs to be organic, developed from within, crafted by the population itself, and implemented by the city. So it's a little upside-down to ask me what my vision of Chanute is, but I'll give it a shot. My vision of Chanute can be summed up with the phrase, "Local voices, local vision." It's a city that listens to its citizens, that gives them a voice. That means in my vision that the city is divided up into five or perhaps seven districts. Each district is represented by its own commissioner. No more popularity contest or lopsided representation. It's a city that asks for permission from the voters before spending $19 million. It's a city that respects the will of the voters if they say no to additional debt. It's a city with a lower overall debt burden, keeping money in the bank for a rainy day. It's a city with a fully-developed fiber network, built up over time, paid for without incurring debt. I call this sustainable growth and presented these ideas to the commission earlier this year. It's a city that is attracting new businesses, not because we offer some giveaway tax breaks, but because we offer lower taxes than competing cities and have a palpable sense of innovation without burdensome regulation. It's a city who rethinks how we deploy business loans. Instead of handouts and acting as a lender of last resort, we work with the banks and become risk-sharing partners in a conventional loan. It's a city who is as eager to collect delinquent loans as it is to penalize lifelong citizens who fall behind on their utility bills. In my vision, Chanute quits hiring outside experts to tell us how to live. We quit viewing city managers as kings and reestablish- We quit viewing city managers as kings and reestablish a strong mayor form of government. In my vision of Chanute, her citizens begin to take care of each other and respect a diversity of opinion. We lead by humility and permission, not arrogance, entitlement, and a deeply ingrained sense of privilege.
I would like to see, I dropped this, and I think it's all... Hello? Hello? Okay. I would like to see every home immaculate and filled with families, every building on Main Street and in the industrial park, you know, filled with businesses employing our citizens with well-paying jobs, children playing in the streets, crime rate of zero. Let's get back to realistic. A city government that listens to the citizens with commissions elected by district, commissioners elected by districts or precincts, so that local people have more control. A healthy city utilities that maybe even pay back dividends to the owners, who are the citizens of Chanute. Every small town struggles with their younger people moving away. Part of it's, you know, for the excitement of the big city, part of it is to make more money. It's tough for a small town to compete with big-city jobs, big-city excitement. But a lot of them do come home, and that's for the safety of the small town, for a good place to raise a family, the schools that are better. And we need to work on better-paying jobs. But just because we have fiber doesn't mean we're going to get jobs. Just because, you know, we have better schools doesn't mean we're going to get jobs. I'm not sure I even know the answer, but we need to work together. And I guess I got the last word.
This completes our questions for the night, and I want to thank the candidates for coming out tonight and sharing with us their thoughts. It's a very important time for us, we appreciate your time and your compassion for our community. We also want to thank the city of Chanute, TV5, those who made this possible. Again, thank those at home that are watching, and as Tim said earlier, thank you all for coming out, it's a good crowd tonight. I want to encourage you to get the local candidate guide. I see one of them sitting right there, it was, I was going to grab it, but he took it away so I could show you. But they're free at the Chamber, also free down at Chanute Tribune. It's a nice way for you to be able to recap what these candidates each represent. Tonight's forum will be rebroadcast on Channel 4 and 5, and also on the TV5 website. The Chamber is pleased to present this program to you. We believe strongly in our community, and we encourage all of you to get out and vote. The election will be held on Tuesday, April 2. We encourage you, make sure you're there, and represent your right to vote, and I opt to...
The primary's the 3rd of March. The 3rd of March, the general's the 7th of April.
Thank you, I'm just reading what's written. But I appreciate that. So the 3rd of March. So the 3rd of March, what you'll do is we'll vote on this collective, and then on April 2nd, will be the final vote on those who make it through the first round. Thanks, Bernie, appreciate it. I'll leave you with a thought again from Booker T. Washington, it goes like this, "Character, not circumstances, make the man." And I think that's a good thing to hang on to, and I encourage, I appreciate everybody's candor tonight and your willingness to attack the issue and not the person. It was a very good interaction, and I think it exemplifies one of our founders' quotes of this town, which was, "Your attitude determines your altitude." That's all we have tonight, and I thank you for...